Well, folks, welcome to one more edition of Politics and Run. I'm Alberto, it's your host. Thank you so kindly for being part of the show. We are going to have a great show for you today. Let me see if I have any drop packets. No drop packets today. No drop packets today. But I see some freezing on the line. Anyhow, folks, give me a call out. How are we doing on sync? I think we are synced, correct? Anyhow, we have a great show scheduled for you today. Look, I am not exactly sure where I'm going to go. It's going to be based a whole lot about what you guys have to say because I'm noticing here you have a lot of stuff to talk about. Ah, yeah, para ver, para ver, para ver, para ver, para ver, para ver. Okay, Michael Rudden is with here in the beginning with his research. Five dead, 20 injured, updated as an hour ago. Their charges include five counts of manslaughter. Darrell Brooks is the suspect in the Waukesha Christmas parade incident. The Milwaukee man has been charged with crime 16, 16, 16 times since 1999. Brooks was charged November 5th with felony second degree reckless endangerment, safety fellow, bail, jumping, and three misdemeanors, including disorderly conduct and battery with domestic abuse. Numero uno, numero dos, corporations are using inflation as an excuse to raise prices and make fatter profits. Hey, did you read my notes or something? Because we are going to play a little smitch about that stuff if we get through the interview with brother Cliff Olney. But anyhow, corporations using inflation as excuse to raise prices and make fatter profits, and it's making the problem worse. Hello, corporate capitalism. How else will they screw the people? Penalizing price gouging with felony charges is the only viable solution to this as corporates have shown time and again, they are very willing to pace slap on the wrist fines amounting to a fraction of their profiteering, which is absolutely true. Right wing bubbles is in a frenzy about this. Bernie Sanders gets the $5 trillion bill. Sanders got his $5 trillion bill, which is the real cost of bill back better if it is scored honestly. You know what? Let's keep that quiet. Shh, shh, don't say that, don't say that. All right, I'd call myself a tax and spend Democrat if only Democrats would actually tax the rich and spend on the poor. You know, Rudden, if you, if you come up with another smart Alex statement like that, I'm going to, I'm going to actually try to get you the gold standard award right away because that is such a true statement, important statement, true statement as well. The bill back better bill offers us $2 trillion. Game over, man, game over. Our trajectory leads to an anthropogenic extinction level event. A largely unlivable earth billions of climate refugees. Yvette Avery Herod, my union specialist, my union hero. How are you doing? Welcome aboard. AVQ says I'm watching from Twitch, AVQ punto uno. If AVQ also says, oh, and just to be clear, 5 trillion hasn't passed yet. Despite that, it is absolutely necessary. What I'm trying to tell you, AVQ, is that be careful with how we start reading this thing because I like what I see. I like the way it is implemented. It is implemented in a fashion that says, try to take this away from our peeps and see what happens. Out of sync on YouTube? Don't say that. Okay, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I am seeing some stops and delay, but I only have six drop packets. So I'm not sure what we're looking at there. So we'll, we'll go ahead and, and take it all. Bridge MCP says I'm all sync up. AVQ says audio video looks good. Uh, it's gone out of sync on Twitter as well, but it's not too bad. Okay, let's hope it doesn't get much worse than that. We have some issues that I am not exact in sync and then freezes. Oh, I am seeing those freezes as well. I am not sure where they're coming from, then it gets in sync again. I think what happens is it catches up, gets in sync. Um, I am not sure what that problem is. We'll, we'll take care of that and keep on looking into it. Good afternoon, Maywood says, E2247 says, hello relatives, everyone. Hello from Long Beach, California. Hello relatives again. Daniel Lado, my, I just love Daniel Lado. You know, he had to spin one thing. So he says BLM kills four, no criminal kills four. Let's get it right, Lado. You want to keep your, you want to keep your credibility, don't you? We all want you to keep your credibility too, brother Lado. We want people to believe in you. We want people to take conservatism not as, as anything serious, but something that is at least worth talking about. Okay, so let's get busy. All right, let's see. Bridge MCP says, hey, everyone, Paul Fleming. Paul, my, my, I continue to share my love with you, brother. I hope all is getting better day by day. Tom C, out of sync on YouTube. I think it's going to get better. John, let's see what else we got here. Bridge MCP says, yeah, Tom C, it's about three seconds off sync now. I think it should be back on sync. Okay, 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 okay. Uh, tell me, guys, when you see it back in sync. I am hoping that this is a glitch. Now, I noticed there is a new version of Wires Cast Out and I am hoping that that will solve the problem. Anyhow, let's go ahead and start. Uh, you know, back in a few years ago, there were several of us that CNN created and a thing called I Report. The idea was a citizen reporting army, right? They want a lot of citizens reporters out there is what they were looking for. And several of us started to engage because it was a way for activists to get their message out. Eventually CNN stopped it and I think the reason they stopped it, it had something to do with we started to get a big voice, the activists. In fact, there was a time that I was on CNN, on CNN in prime time, not prime time, but the afternoons and evenings, uh, sometimes once, twice a day, sometimes three, four times a week, my reports would run on CNN. The same with Cliff Olney, another activist who was fighting for healthcare reform like I was and other types of reform. Well, I hadn't heard from Cliff Olney in a while, but I followed him all the while on Facebook. And it turns out Cliff did exactly what we said as grassroots activists, some of us needed to do. Those of us who had, uh, who could do it, in other words, had the wherewithal and the opportunity to enter electoral politics. The idea was we needed to go ahead and do it. And Cliff Olney tried to do it as mayor. Cliff Olney tried to do it as councilman. And when he lost twice, he said, what I'll do is I'll reconfigure and I will do it again because we need in Watertown, New York, we needed to make a change. In Watertown, New York, we were going to do all these things that these conservative crooks prevented them from doing. And the progressives finally took over the council in Watertown with the election of Cliff Olney and two others. And when I found that out, I gave Cliff Olney a call. I said, hey, Cliff, congratulations, councilman. I need to talk to you. Then he called me back last night and he said, Alberto, it's you. Let's have a talk. And then I said, we gotta do it, brother. He said, when? Do it tonight. You have it available? Said, come on, brother, let's do it tonight. So without further ado, here is the one and only Cliff Olney. Welcome to one more edition of Politics and Run. I'm Alberto, Willie's your host. Today we are honored to have Cliff Olney, a business owner and activist, a former CNN I reporter. We, we did a whole lot of stuff together over the years at CNN and other places. He is now not just an I reporter, not just a business owner, but he became the councilman, one of the councilmen of, or council people of Watertown, New York. Cliff Olney, welcome to Politics and Run. How are you doing today?
I'm very good. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Let me tell you something, man.
It's been a long time.
You know, we were all grassroots guys, always trying to make a difference. And, uh, you know, we always talk about politics, et cetera. Who's going to go out there and, and join the fold? And you know, man, you didn't only join the fold, you did it and you won after some trepidation. But why don't you tell us a little, let us, give us a little history here?
Well, it was in 2015 and before that you and I knew each other, right? You know each other now. Um, in that my daughter was born, my second daughter, Marissa, was born prematurely. So when, uh, she was born, we had full insurance, right? Coverage, a Cadillac policy as they referred to it during the Obama, uh, the Obamacare debate. And so, uh, they dropped us. And when they dropped us, they said to us that it was cheaper for them to litigate it than it was to pay the bill of 280,000. So I said, oh, that's not right. Went to my GOP congressman. Um, he said, well, you know, things happen. So I became an activist and started fighting for healthcare on a national level. And so I dabbled into the local politics in 2015. I got punched out in the primary. But then in 2017, there were two issues that were going on in the city of Waterton. I couldn't believe, uh, the people that were in charge at that time didn't want to rebuild the Thompson Park pool. Now, this was after years of neglect, right? They've not done things that they needed to to maintain it. And so they felt, well, um, there's too much money, you know? So I said, obviously it's not, and that is a gem. And that brings a lot of other tourists to that park for the zoo and other things that we had up there. And so I jumped into the race. We knocked out two intransigent council people that were already on the council. Um, I didn't win, I came in third, but Lisa and Ryan did win and they got the Thompson Park Pool Bill and there's so much more that we can do. So I thought, all right, in 2019, I had another opportunity to run for city councilman again and maybe get in this time. And then I saw this very conservative mayor who had run in, then in council before, uh, was, he decided to run. So I said, there's no way I'm running for council. I'm running against him as mayor for the mayor of the city. Um, and of course then two other people jumped in, they split the vote. He slid in with 38% in the vote and he's been there for the last two years. Well, his time in office has been riddled with, um, cutting pools, uh, selling off our heavy rescue truck, which gave the city a much better response time to any emergency and on and on and on. It just goes on and it's like this punitive measure after measure that this guy has just, you know? And actually I think what has happened over the last two years and people have seen what he's done and what they, uh, what he had was two reliable yes votes. Every single vote, anytime he wanted to do something, he was able to. And the other two that were in the minority, the two that got in in 2017, the progressives, weren't able to do anything. So this year, um, what I did was I, I made it a referendum on him. Are you better off now after two years of Jeff Smith than you were when he took office? Yes, sound familiar? Was it Reagan in America, right? And, and people made the decision, they weren't better off. And, uh, it was tough because locally we have this very powerful public benefit corporation called the Development Authority of the North Country. And they decided that it was okay for them to run their economic developer or development manager against me and everybody else that was in the race. Cause what he needed was one more person to say yes. And quite frankly, just to give you a little background, the way this opened up the opportunities, uh, council votes for mayor every four years. Well, it wasn't, and plus two council people. This year we had the opportunity to replace two city councilmen and one of the councilmen that won in 2019, who was a good friend of his and a reliable yes vote for the mayor, uh, decided to resign because he was, the word is, he was sick of it. He's sick of saying yes and couldn't develop, uh, the ability to say no. And he just got out. So it opened up three seats and we took all three. We were drawing to an inside straight. All he needed was one more ace in his hand.
And, and so now you got a progressive council.
We have a progressive council. So, um, the thing, the first thing is of course is to learn, um, what is going on, all the levers, where they are and that kind of thing. And now this week I'm going through orientation with all the department heads. So that's been interesting. And then so that's pretty much it. So this is the, they say the third time's the charm. Well, this was the fourth time.
Well, let me tell you something. Why this? Let me tell you why this was so intriguing to me because we talk a whole lot about grassroots and we talk about people who really want change running. And, but, but we have a lot of talk and we don't have a lot of people doing it. Some who say they're doing that, some would say, okay, well, why don't you run? Well, each of us had our, our ace to play in the game, right? Well, you decided to get up there and run, but most importantly, you asked the right questions. If we take a look at how the Democrats are performing right now, one of the things that they're not doing is asking that question, are you better off today than you were before? And likewise, what have you done for me lately? And what specifically are you going to do? And it seems to me like you covered all your bases. You did an interview earlier for the station out there and it was evident that you covered all the bases. And you know, the guy knew it, he ran out of questions for you, man.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was what was most interesting about this race is that I've been looking for the answer, uh, as though is the answer. And I think Crosby, Still, Nash and Young, uh, they wrote a song about they, they finally thought they found somebody who knew the truth. And it came down to, it was a child laughing, right? There was no truth. It was the simplicity of what it is that I saw on the trail. Um, the biggest thing, I'll give you an example of what it was. My daughter came over to the house and she said, Dad, I want you to explain something to me. I said, what's that? She says, I went by a house on Arlington Street and it had a Trump 2024 sign in it on the front yard. It had a Lisa Regerall sign, which is, she's a Republican, but she's a moderate and sensible, like the old Teddy Roosevelt kind of Republican. You don't see that much now. And you had, she says, and I, I saw Cliff only sign on the same yard. How do you square that? How do you square that? And I said, well, I think here's the thing. What I've come to the realization of is this, Democrats need a much better messaging machine out there, all right? We're not saying what we're doing. And what people want, um, if you look and listen to, look at what's going on and listen to the people, what they're asking us to do is to, they want a good government. They want a government that works. They want a government that provides things for them. Now, the speed at which that happens is different from a conservative or progressive point of view, but they want the same things. What we find, what I find is that the Republican Party, uh, right now is, is stealing our ideas. All right. And they're, they're, they're running their campaigns on our ideas. Now, the girl that was in this race is very much so conservative. All right. She on the top of her sign wrote, vote for progress. She's a conservative, my God. And I, I looked at that and then she had on the end on the local news site, website, and it was vote for progress. And so I, I, I got a little peeved and I said, well, that's, we're not getting, she's not getting away with that. If you, if you, if you think progress is cool, you better embrace the concept. It's not just something on a campaign slogan on a sign. So I got all back with the sign and I got all back with this ad that she had in the paper. And I stood there in front of my camera and I said, vote for progress. I said, it says on her campaign sign on the top. I said, vote for progress. It says on her campaign ad on news site. I said, if people are going to vote for progress, they're not going to be voting for you, Michelle. I said, you're a conservative. I said, people want progress. It's if there's something you think that you really like and enjoy that idea, then you should embrace the concept. And I, but then I said, you know, any forward movement, even if it's at a snail's pace, I guess could be considered progress, you know? So, you know, she's within her rights to say she's for progress. But you know, my point, my question is how much, how fast and when? You know, it's like the, the Republicans say, we're going to create jobs. Okay, where? First, China. Secondly, how much do they pay? You know, you go through the whole thing. So I guess to summarize is that, uh, people want government to work for them. And, uh, unfortunately what we saw, I think, and I don't know if you'll agree with this, but this was my analysis was when Bernie ran against Hillary, um, Bernie had the progressive ideas. And, um, when he got knocked out in the primary because of all the different forces that were aligned against him, um, he, Trump was watching. And Trump saw that it was in a very effective populist campaign against Hillary Clinton. And he adopted everything that Bernie was saying about bringing the jobs back, lowering the taxes, creating more good paying jobs. It was, you go right down the list. He didn't plan on doing any of it, but it sounded good. And so what these guys are doing is they're taking our message and they're selling it to our people and we're not countering it.
Let me stop you right there, um, because I've written about that at the Daily Coast, exactly that where, where Donald Trump didn't only triangulate Democrats, but he actually took our ideas, knowing that he would never bring our ideas to pass. But the problem about it is our, our neoliberals have no intentions of passing the ideas either. And that leaves a lot of people in limbo. Do we go with the neoliberals or do we go with the fascists? Which ones?
Um, the, the fact is that where progressives are right now is where the country needs to be. But this are not up to speed where we already are. And I'll give you an example of what I think. Um, a lot of the Democrats are saying, well, we need a woman in there to be able to represent women's interests. We need a black man, uh, in order to represent black interests. We need a Hispanic person and, you know, I don't know, Asian, whatever. Um, Jewish guy to represent the Jewish people's interests. A real, true progressive will represent every person's interest. No matter what the color, what the religion, what your sexuality is, nothing, it doesn't matter. And when Sanders was doing what he was doing, he could transition all of these different ethnic differences that we have in our party. And so instead of us having to completely, you know, it's almost like we have affirmative action within our party to be able to get the right people and to represent the, the interests of each individual group instead of saying, look, we all have the same interests. And a person who can recognize that and is totally unbiased in any of his beliefs about any of it and the, the differences between us, we should celebrate those differences and then create policy that actually does celebrate those differences and, um, and creates a policy that supports the differences as well equally. That, that can be done, but we still have that to, we have to bridge that gap, I think. I don't know.
No, let me tell you, I, I agree with that wholehearted. If you take a look at, if you take a look at some of the stuff that we write about, right? I, I tell people all the time, I can't, I can't beg or ask anybody to like me, but I can demand that policy is there that makes sure that you and I, Cliff, have the same access to success, that we have the same equity, all those things. Now, we're not talking equal, we're not talking, uh, equality based on anything other than equal access to success.
To success, equal opportunity. Exactly. This country and it's about that. If you have the equal opportunity to, um, people are going to, you know, the idea of income inequality is another word. I think what we need is a Frank Luntz, only a democratic version.
All right. Oh, you know what? Seriously. True. That is Frank Luntz is a master at what he does. And you know what? Sometimes he even laugh at himself. Sometimes he'll be like, damn, that actually worked.
Yeah, it did, you know? Well, we remember George Bush's compassionate conservative phrase. Come on. In other words, if you want to parse the thing and look at it and take it apart, it's that the compassionate conservative mindset feels bad for the people that he's taken their food stamps away. I feel bad that I gotta take your food stamps. I'm a passionate conservative, my God. And people bought it, they, they lapped it up. And so I'm not suggesting that we come out with things like that, but when you have abortion rights versus women's choice, you know, the different ways that we frame it, gun control keeps up the news, uh, stories about the things that we're trying to count, but we're not trying to control guns. What we're trying to do is create, uh, universal background checks. So people that don't, shouldn't have guns, don't get guns, you know? And so until the messaging is clear, um, let's face it, we're facing a machine at the other side.
And, and you know, Danny Deutsch, Danny Deutsch, I, last week, came out with a sort of a master plan for Democrats. And I, you know, I wrote a piece, uh, this morning actually, where I said, you know, I'm not a fan of Danny Deutsch. Danny Deutsch is a neoliberal, but he is a Democrat, right? And Danny Deutsch comes out and he says, um, we need to relay, get our messaging right and we need to put people out there on all the daily shows on, on, out in mass, 24 people out there all of the times. Because what I wrote in the article is I said, you know what? What Danny Deutsch is saying is real, but it's already been implemented and shown some success. How can the, how can Republicans with such lousy policies garner such support? And the only way that has been done is because they follow that methodology.
You know, the idea of neoliberalism, when you look at it and it's touted as such a great thing because you know, of course we want, uh, business to do well. All right. Um, what we failed to do, I think, and what I failed to do is point out to people that government has an essential role in the economy because not just of regulation, because regulation is something that everybody gets their back over. Um, what it does, I'll give you an example of a local situation. And we have to translate this into the more national policy. We have local, um, trash haulers in town. They pick up people's trash. Watertown also has its own municipal trash service, okay? And I talked to the trash people about this, uh, what we might do for policy. Some people on council right now, the more conservatives ones, would like us to get completely out of the trash business as a city. Get rid of it. It's costing us money. We're not making anything on it. Well, you know, the Navy doesn't make this money either. The post office never was designed to make this money. It was a service, okay? So this mindset of, if it doesn't make this money, we should get rid of it. Well, maybe we should get rid of roads, you know?
It makes no money, right?
Money. Maybe you can put an odometer on it and some people will bill monthly. My point is, is that I said to the individual I was talking to, he was conservative. It's number one, I said, if you get rid of the city's trash business, I said, what you do is you set up a situation where all the private followers can raise their price any way they want. I said, what government is, is a stabilizing factor. Now, we don't want to present our products so much lower than the private companies that we now are predatory. But we, we need to be in there just a bit maybe to keep them, give them an incentive to keep their pricing reasonable and still be profitable. Now, if they come to us and say, look, you're lower than what we can afford to run our business at by a quarter, then you know, it can be, it should be considered that we may raise our price on our.
You know, using that trash as an example. We need to use that trash as a quick example before we move on here. Um, you know, the trash company is going to be likely held by shareholders and, uh, and there are two things that they're going to have to do. Cut the payoff people who pick up trash. And if they cut the payoff people who pick up trash, those people were the people in your community who were spending in these grocery stores and other places, which were paying sales taxes, et cetera. And likewise, if they go to the private sector, all it means is a nice, good old transfer of wealth from the city to a few wealthy individuals as you marginalize the workers who are actually, they are picking up trash at a lower cost, I mean, at a large wage now. So I mean, it's not a hard concept. Now, I want to jump onto something before we end this here because we're running out of time. But, um, uh, there is this big hoopla about the supply chain problems as well as inflation. And every calculation that I've done so far tells me that this has nothing to do with government. It's a failure of the private sector that is creating inflation that is not due. In other words, inflate, a false inflation because of those who have price and power. And secondly, that the supply chain's problem is, uh, shows that this efficiency that we always talk about, the private sector with things like just in time inventory, et cetera, et cetera, that they have shown that they are not at all more, uh, they are not at all more than we are. They are not at all more, uh, efficient than we are, than government is.
No question. Um, the, what you're talking about, there's, there's, uh, it's true. The, the idea started back with NAFTA. And what we did was outsource, uh, you know, the economy of scale and other things to countries that we felt could do it better. Now, all of those things were based on, um, everything working perfectly. Now, throw a pandemic into the works. Slow down the whole mechanism to the degree that we can't do just in time anymore. You know, just in time is a great concept. I used to work at a box company and we sold that idea to companies rather than them inventorying many boxes at a better price that they paid a little bit more for just in time delivery because they didn't have to inventory or tie their capital up, uh, for that, those products beyond the end for six, eight months. They don't need that much. You can get them there in six weeks, uh, so they're not running out. At the same time, they're getting when they, uh, getting the boxes when they need it. So when you add all of what's happened with the shortage of workers and the unwillingness of some people to get the vaccination, the, um, the, the thing that I've heard mostly is workers aren't going back. Well, people are getting sick. What good did it do you to get your vaccination? Because if you have the vaccination, they're getting sick now too. But it's an entirely different virus. It mutated, but we were vaccinated for, um, that virus, we're immune. We have immunities for that. Now it's something different. So you know, the, the conversation has been distorted so much. But going back to what you're saying, when we outsourced a lot of our jobs and manufacturers, other companies, or countries, we relied on them to deliver. And when you're, um, six or eight weeks or however long it takes to get from China over here for masking, you saw what those things did and that supply chain did just in the early parts of the pandemic, right? Uh, we couldn't get masks. We couldn't get the PPEs, uh, we couldn't get all that stuff. And unfortunately, um, that should have, somebody should have thought about this a long time before because it wasn't a good idea. It's a national security issue. If you think of our two biggest economic competitors like China and also with Russia, all right, with China mostly, all right, what are we going to ask them to make our berets for our soldiers if we go to war with them? Or maybe, maybe we could say to them, hey, could you just maybe slip us some chips for our Humvees that we're going to use in a war against you? Uh, you know, all of what was done, if we were a galactic society, one worthy of being noticed by other civilizations around our galaxy. one worthy of being noticed by other civilizations around our galaxy, one that was actually worth um coming to a less primitive society than what we still are with the xenophobic uh points of view that we have. Um, yeah, um, in a perfect world, it would be okay. And if we, yeah, all those things, but if, 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 you know, it's.
All the ifs, all the ifs. Hey Cliff, I don't know how many of my interviews you've listened to, but the same old question that I asked, the last question, and it goes this way. What would you have liked me to ask you that I didn't?
Oh, my God.
I told you.
Oh, I think the thing we need to be very concerned about right now is our democracy. What I see is that there's so much misinformation from talking to people out there. They believe that it is one uh, that they have similar beliefs about government and things, all right, as what progressives do, conservatives do. But they blame the wrong people for the problems that we're seeing. They're convinced that it's all the Democrats' fault. It's not. You know, when I look at the the differences between us, there's not much uh as far as differences in only in the capacity uh, the the speed at which something we get done, it's on who they blame. And I blame the media that is forwarding this up. And I'll tell you quite frankly, um, the one thing that has surprised me the most is that until this has all happened, this is good in one way. We've got to get on top of it. We got to get the message right. We got to get that out there. Is that I never knew people were so vulnerable to the propaganda that we see. So gullible and willing to believe nonsense when their own critical thinking isn't working for them. And I think that it's because there's been false narratives. But I think more importantly, there's a certain mindset to people who are inclined to embrace authoritarian type uh government. They don't know what to do with their freedom and liberty. And they look to somebody else to give them the answers for that. Honestly, you and I have been friends a long time. I have plenty to do of the time that I have, and I don't need somebody else telling me what to do with it. All right, they seem to, even though they claim that they're independent, they want somebody to be dictating to them what their time is used for and how they should go out and spend it. I don't agree. So we got to find the right message to clarify, I think. And and thank you so much for inviting me to come on and talk, and I'm excited because of all that's happening.
Let me tell you, we we are very proud of you, Cliff. I mean, we we're gonna go into that CNN I report group and really really said, hey, we did it, man, we did it. Cliff Olney is a business owner, activist, former CNN I reporter. He is now councilman of Watertown, New York. It's been my pleasure to have you on Politics Done Right. Thank you so kindly for having been here, my friend.
Thank you very much, my friend. I appreciate it.
All right, folks, I hope you enjoyed that. Uh, as it turns out, okay, 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 El Señor Rodnan, there is your caption on the screen which says the following. The problem with Trump is that he's a multi billionaire pseudo populist with autocratic sensibilities and some fascist proclivities. That's what dangerous about him. He's for real. He's just not for right. Exactamente mundo. Okay, here's the deal. I'm gonna, I have some other videos that I get to show, where I want to show you. But I'm gonna take these messages from, I think, where I left off and para ver, para ver si lo puedo encontrar, if I can find it. Uh, let's see, Tom C. Well, let me welcome all the other folks in. Peggy Lopez, welcome aboard. Who else we got here coming in? Eric Hayes, oh, look, my conservative clan is here. We got Eric, we got uh Lado and we've got who else from the conservative clue, Ann Lee Grant. Hey, Lee Grant, how you doing, brother? All right, Yvette Avery says, interview, great interview, his perseverance is admirable. But you know what, Yvette? Yours too. You're out there beating the pavement and doing the work, young lady. Thanks for this guy. I like him, says Bridge MCP. Daniel Lado says, what did he say? I jumped. Linda Curtis says, you're independent clang here too, pal. Linda Curtis, I did see you, but I see you now. So we've got the right, the left, and the middle. Well, I don't call you the middle, Linda. You are independent. Independent doesn't mean middle. The mythical middle doesn't really exist. Just doing what's right does. All right, Eric Hayes says, uh, Hiroshima, no, no, this is E two two four seven, Hiroshima, Vietnam, JFK assassination, nineteen forty five, fifty eight, sixty three, our collective infamies, and we have a lot more than that. We can talk about Vietnam, we can talk about Panama, the invasion to get Manuel, supposedly to get Manuel Antonio Noriega. Funny. Daniel Lado says, lol, seriously, this joker just lamented, we are not being recognized by the galactic empire. It's amazing that you cannot take uh, that you cannot take when somebody is using an analogy. But we do expect that from you, my brother. All right, let's see what else we got here. Eric Hayes says, we have people on government that have been in it for years. Yeah, you know why? If people keep electing them, then they're gonna be there for years. Isn't that right? Of course it is. All right, Linda Jo Kessinger, welcome aboard. She says, hi, everyone. Uh, oh, we already have background checks going on and laws on the books. Yes, we do. What else have we got here? What else have we got here? What else have we got here? Para ver, government price controls and government factories creating products are a measure against corporate price gouging. And it's necessary, says he, says Aviqo. And uh, Bridge talk, you like what he talked about trash, Bridge? She says, trash went up to thirty nine dollars and they counted over. It's twenty dollars. Yep, yep, yep. When you privatize, it's another way of increasing the price. It's another way of transferring. When government privatizes its service, it's nothing more than transferring wealth to the few. I want you to take that to the bank. When government, again, this is important for you to recognize, when government sells their services for private sector to take over, it is no different than taking your hard earned dollars and giving it to the Trumps of the world. That's what it's all about. The the biggest lie is that the private sector is more efficient than the public sector. I'm gonna continue with the questioning, but since I use that comment, I want to play a video that sort of tells the story. I want to repeat this, and I want you to listen keenly. The private sector is not more efficient than the public sector at all. It is thievery. In other words, the way they do it is we take away the monies from the few and to reduce the cost to the government as we pocket the difference for the plutocracy. And if you doubt it, I want you to check. Oh, I have a screen on that I don't want. But anyway, here, here we go again, because I I want to get this right. Saying, I've got to get this right. Let's repeat. And it goes this way. Whenever the government says, I am going to give to the private sector a service that once was done by the government because it's more efficient, it is a lie, a complete lie. It is a manner of transferring your wealth to the rich, to the shareholders, and another way to cut the pay of those who actually do the work. All right, let's remember that. But I want you to listen to this while I say the economic system is a fraud. And then I'll tie those two together. It is important that we get it. It is important that we see it. Check it out here.
Deirdre, I want to start with you. People are struggling. You heard them struggling there, heading into the holiday. The White House has said this is a transitory problem, but is it more fundable, fun fundamental? Is this gonna stick around?
Well, Martha, from your excellent report, I mean, we saw with those families, I mean, it's everything. It's food, it's gasoline, this thirty year high. So for them, it feels fundamental. It feels basic because it is. In speaking with economist Gregory Daco is one of note at Oxford Economics, he does say in the next twelve months that pricing pressures should begin to come down, the logic being that some of these supply chain issues that we've been hit so hard with will begin to mitigate, and that is going to take down some of the pricing pressure. But in the near term, for the next six months, let's face it, we are all going to pay more for everything. Rent, food, gasoline, the next six months is belt tightening, and it's a difficult time of year for a lot of people who would like to enjoy the holidays with their families.
And Diane, I know that the pandemic takes a lot of the blame here, but how did it really get so bad? Supply chain, obviously, but how did it get to this point where that package of meat went from eighteen dollars to thirty dollars?
Yeah, no, it's really a demand surge, which is one aspect of it. First of all, inflation is global in scope. It's not just happening here. But it's a demand surge. It was during the Delta wave, the supply chain disruptions got even worse because of that. So even though we slowed down our spending, which should have cooled off inflation a bit, we actually saw, we started spending more on goods again. And in that process, with the disruptions we saw through the Delta wave around the world, further disrupting supply chains, that further pushed up prices. And then we've got this perverse labor issue. We've got a pandemic, people are afraid to come back to work, there's still people on the sidelines. Yet there's wages are going up, but there's shortages, and it's it's a really all of the above situation. It's very complex. It's very, there's no precedence for what we're going through. And even though inflation, it will get worse before it gets better, and it will eventually abate one way or the other. Another is that the Fed will raise rates. And I think the risk is though, is that we've got some lingering in things like shelter costs, rents are going up very, very rapidly, that are still gonna burn even after this cools down a bit. And that's what the federal end up having to worry about.
And 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 Deirdre, let's, let's talk long term here. We've been on this kind of just in time manufacturing system, no overhead costs, or they're less than they were before. Uh, there are glitches in the system, obviously, if a chip doesn't come through, the whole line breaks down. So do we need to look at a more resilient system? Deirdre, can you take this one?
Uh, of course, we sure do. This is a big furry mess. And the whole irony of just in time was that it was built to be more efficient, and we are now seeing the exact opposite of that. So we.
And Diane, finally, is there any advice you would give to consumers right now?
Well, you know, what we're doing is we're gonna be going through a very hard period, and if there's things that you can delay, I actually think there's because of the issues we're seeing from just in time to just in case inventories, we're gonna see a building of inventories by twenty twenty three. If you don't need to buy a car right now, wait it out. If you don't need to buy some of those other things that are goods that people have spent so much on, if you can wait it out a little bit, we're gonna see some discounting on the other side of this, which makes it more of a boom bust cycle. But it is, you know, being able to pace yourself in terms of what you really need. There's also a lot of people selling some things that they got during the pandemic on things like Craigslist.
Imagine that. Now, what they've just told you is they've just told you, by the way, these are capitalist, real high level capitalists, these three, these two women and the who the the host represents. There are these big time capitalists who believe, believe in all this crap that the economic system, which is a fraud, of course. But they believe it, and they just told you the economic system is a fraud. We are so indoctrinated that even when being told that it's a ripoff, we don't get it. Let me explain. She talks about, uh, she finally admits and say, they used to talk about the efficiency of the private sector, the efficiency of just in time inventory, and it has proven to be false. It didn't take a rocket scientist to say that. We always knew that. But they are, they 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 now have a supply chain issue. They try to peg it on the government, but no, it's a failure of the private sector trying to maximize and take away your, your, your income. The corporate sector, I prefer to say, because I don't want to, I don't want to put the pizza shop and the small grocer into the same category uh as the corporate frauds that we have here. So that we always know was a lie. Then they says, okay, all you have to do right now is don't shop. Let the suckers pay that high price that these people are paying right now. Don't shop. That's what she says. Don't shop. And then after the suckers buy the stuff and the supply chain says, I'm still making the same amount of money by selling these things to these suckers. I'll bring in more product later so that all the other people who would not buy at the ridiculous prices would buy. They are telling you, they are telegraphing to you that the economic system is a fraud. You notice that the M G said it's a boom and bust cycle? And guess who always get busted? You do, not the corporate sector. When they are about to lose money, they lay the people off and they keep the executives populated with money. They get paid to lay you off and they get paid to bring you back in. Now, I want to address something that somebody says here, my brother, conservative Lee Grant, because he makes a very important point. Brother Lee Grant said the following, and it's so important, I must talk about it. Uh, what did he say? Did he say, Alberto, come on, Lee, I need to find, Lee Grant says, Alberto, by your logic, we do well to transfer all the private sector to the public sector, all the private sector to the public sector. That would look a lot like communism. False. I don't want all the private sector to the public sector. I don't want that pizza shop to be run by the government. I, the pizza shop is a joy. You take your kids out to the, to the, to the, to the, to the public parks. You take your kid, I mean, to the private parks, you take your kid to get a sandwich, a hamburger, all of that belongs in the private sector. But things like healthcare, things like fuel, things like electricity, things that we depend on, that everybody use as a society, does not belong in the pub, in the private sector. You know why? Because it can be manipulated. If I break a leg, I can say, I don't feel like fixing my leg today. I'm gonna wait till the price of fixing the leg drops. I can't do that. The capitalist market belong in a very select area where it doesn't matter, where it really can be, where it can really be a free market. You cannot have a free market on things you must have. You can have a free market in things you can choose to have. And that is where people don't understand. That is why Medicare Advantage is the biggest fraud. We are paying for the demise of Medicare by supporting Medicare Advantage because we decide to pay more for, we decide to give the private sector more to support Medicare Advantage than we give the public sector to support plain old Medicare. All right, it's a fraud. It's a fraud, but the problem is we don't have enough people talking about it as a fraud. Paul Fleming says, we need to make Alberto the Fed chairman. Hey, I am not smart enough to be the Fed chairman. I don't know all the ins and outs of those capitalist structures. I know about derivatives and all of that, but I would have a hell of a steep learning curve. But I tell you what, I would, what I would do is I'll scrap the Federal Reserve and change it into a more uh collective system. Uh, Peggy Lopez says, retrain bought capitalism does not better in areas where there is no life threatening goods. Exactly, Peggy Lopez, exactly. Oh, wow, 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 it is past. You're right, Bridge, I forgot to ask for, for you guys to join. If you are on YouTube right now, I ask you so kindly, go ahead and select, uh, what is the word again? Go ahead and click on the join button, click on the join button. If you are on, on, on YouTube right now, become a member of the P D R Posse supporting this show that tells only the truth, the truth, and the truth. Uh, by the way, now go to politicsonright.com slash YouTube if you don't see that join button. Alternatively, you can always go to politicsonright.com slash Patreon to support us on Patreon. I've given you the whole story while we have Patreon, while we have PayPal, and while we have YouTube. It's a matter of spreading the risk because these are all private companies, right? Hey, they can all screw you, more than likely, they won't all screw you at the same time. Anyway, so please consider giving at politicsonright.com slash patron as well, politicsonright.com slash YouTube. And of course, here is the one for PayPal, which is politicsonright.com slash PayPal. We could not do this without you. It is only you that afford us the ability to do what we do here, to tell the truth and to tell you what the mainstream media and others won't. They'll have you, like, look at what Lee Grant says. Lee Grant had a very valid point. Lee Grant tells me after I said, whenever the public sector asks the private sector to do something that they normally do, he said, well, by your logic, throw everything into the, into, in, in, into the public sector. I'm like, no, that's not what I'm saying. So that interaction gives the ability for us to have a sensible conversation where I can explain to Lee Grant why we need to take healthcare out of the public sector, why we need to take energy out of the public sector, but we keep McDonald's in the private sector. We keep Pizza Hut in the private sector. We keep mom and pop uh restaurants in the private sector. And all of that remains in the private sector because we don't have to have those things. We can choose whether to have them or not, and that is free enterprise. Because if these guys decide the price is too high, we just don't go. But if I break my leg, I can't say the price is too high. I just won't go. People understand how you have been indoctrinated, understand the fraud that you've been, that's been perpetrated on you. And that's why we have politics done right. That's why we do what we do. Now, I want you to, if you want to learn a whole lot about this stuff as well, I would urge you, I would urge you to get my books. And there are three good political books, if I may say so myself, please consider getting them. The first one is, as I see, by the way, you can get them all at politicsonright.com slash books, politicsonright.com slash books. Uh, as I see it, class warfare, the only resort to right wing, do we learn about? You learn about all this stuff about the, the capitalist system, how, how patents and all of that work. And I got a piece here that I'm going to play for you on patents and how the drug companies use the patent system that I describe in my book, As I See It, to screw us all on, on medications, et cetera. The other book is How to Talk to Your Right-Wing Relatives, Friends, and Neighbors. You see, I try to have an interaction with all my conservative brothers and sisters here. And they come back, you guys come back. And you know why you guys come back? Because you know you have a here and here. Lee Grant, brother, you know why you're here. Actually, good supporter, also Brother Ledo, Brother Eric Hayes, Mike Sisak. You guys are constant conservatives. Uh, okay. Yes, yes, Daniel Ledo, Amazon, I don't call Amazon evil, but yes, my books are printed by Amazon. You know, sometimes what's what monopolies do? When you got a monopoly, that's what you got to do. And the last book is How to Make, How to Make America Utopia will tell us what's the next step. I don't believe in saying, all these are all these big problems. Oh, I need to post the link of Ashley's story. Uh, okay. Hey, um, if Ashley is listening to me, send me a text message with the link of your latest story so I can tell all our Politics Done Right people what your greatest link is. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and do, not the medium link, but the, 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 uh, the Vella link. All right, folks, let, let, let's, I want you to listen to this last video. And then we'll go ahead and talk about it. This is about Big Pharma patents, and I want you to go to my, so, hey, hey, AVQ, hold on. You got to watch this one first, and then you can take off, brother. Let me let you see this video, and then we'll move on to the next. I got to make sure that I get it set up right. You know, you know me, I get things kind of screwed up sometimes. Here we go. Check this out.
Drug companies really have much more power to set prices as they want. Um, and in theory, you know, insurance companies are supposed to negotiate lower prices. But the way the system works in this country, um, there's this complicated set of middlemen with back and forth rebates, and the prices just don't come down that much. And then finally, the drug companies have become really good at manipulating the patent system. And so what they do is, you know, insulin, I mean, it's, you know, their usual argument for high prices is, oh, you know, we're inventing this new breakthrough drug.
Right, exactly.
Insulin's been around for a hundred years. They make incremental improvements, but then they add patent after patent on the ingredients and the delivery system. And then no one can make a competitor, and they can charge what they want.
Yeah, in fact, the original developers of insulin in nineteen twenty, I learned this from our second producer, Alexander Price, who told me this today, that, that, that they wouldn't patent it. They sold the patent for a dollar, uh, because they thought it was outrageous to patent this thing. And then Eli Lilly came in, they keep updating the patent so that they could keep the IP. Again, this is not some like, you know, it's not some mind-blowing new development, it's a hundred-year-old drug. And here's the thing that's also wild about this. Here's the cost to manufacture, six dollars and sixteen cents. The cost to purchase, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. They are printing money off the backs of people who literally have no option in order to survive.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and they have no option in order to survive, and they are responding by rationing their own care. They don't take the pills when they should. Then they get sick, and people are literally dying because of this. It's, 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 it's a crazy thing. And yes, the inventors of insulin, they thought it would be greedy. They thought it would be wrong morally to, to, to jack up the prices and have some kind of, you know, monopolistic claim on this drug. They wanted everybody to have it. Uh, quite obviously, that's not the case right now.
Quite obviously, that is not the case right now. Now, um, you know, Daniel Ledo, I love what you just said there because, you know why I love having my conservative brothers and sisters on? Because you give me a reason. You give me a reason to explain something deeper that you wouldn't get elsewhere. Daniel Ledo says, Alberto, drug companies are evil. Also, Alberto says, make sure you get the vaccine. Let's qualify. The vaccines are designed and created by scientists and engineers who don't, who are not part of the, the, the blood-sucking parasitic portion of the, the pharma industry. Good people do good things. I love the engineers that work for Big Pharma. I love the scientists that work for Big Pharma. I love all those people. I love the doctors that work for Big Pharma. But those are not the people that are screwing you. They are inventing at the universities and colleges that we pay for. But Big Pharma are the ones who run the stock market portion of the business, and they screw you all. And Daniel Ledo is critical thinking. Critical thinking that requires you to isolate these items and know what to fight for. And what the plutocracy is betting on is that they, we, they will keep most Americans stupid. The plutocracy is betting on keeping America dumb so that they cannot segment somebody saying, go get the vaccine, Big Pharma are terrorists. Anybody who listens to Politics Done Right understand that Big Pharma are terrorists and that the scientists that work for Big Pharma and the universities are good people. Let's get even better. Big Pharma makes around twenty dollars on each dose. Whoa, wow, which cost them just one dollar to my friend. You get it yet? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. So you're saying we paid for the, we paid for that, and we're still getting sucker. Come on, Daniel Ledo, you should be a smarter man. Oh, actually, it's AVQ who put that out. Thank you, AVQ. Uh, it is, it is sad. It is sad that, that some of us can remain willfully, and I say this with respect, willfully ignorant, okay? And we have to get over our willful ignorance if we're going to make progress. We're at the end of the show, folks. Remember to catch all to, to support Politics Done Right. The catch-all to support Politics Done Right. I noticed I'm stalling because I'm looking for it right now. Um, it's politicsdoneright.com/support. If you want to find out one of the tens of ways to support Politics Done Right, please go to politicsandright.com/support. And that has all the different ways in which you can support us, okay? But we do need your support. And please go ahead and get the books. I saw a lot of newcomers on today. Please consider getting our books at politicsandright.com/books, politicsandright.com/book. Hey, AVQ was running away early, and I told him, hey, wait for the video. He held on, and he said, okay, now I'm really, really, really gone. Okay, AVQ, you be cool. Daniel Ledo says, I will pit up my willful ignorance against your willful propaganda any day. Hey, brother, I would, I tell you what I would do better than that. Any day, you are willing to have a civil conversation in which you get your minute, I get my minute, you get your minute, I get my minute, and we talk, and we bring up points. You could be the star of one of these shows. I will put you on right next to me. No, I won't study, I won't do anything. You just on one screen, I mean, one window, I'm just like we did with Cliff Oldy. The only thing I demand is respect. In other words, I will treat you with respect, and you will treat me with respect. I won't interrupt your minute, and you won't interrupt my minute. And if you want, if you can, if you can do that, hey, the floor will be yours. And any conservative, liberal, progressive, or anybody who wants to be on a full half hour, you know, I do these things on a half hour because I play that KPFT. And in fact, you will be on KPFT on air throughout the country as well. So anybody who wants to have a honest discussion on any of these issues that you disagree with me on or agree with, the floor is yours. Remember, this is Politics Done Right. This is your show. So folks, I'm getting at the end of the program right now, so I got to get a lot of dodge. My name is Alberto Willis. This is Politics Done Right, and you know how I end this, baby? I am what? We spend a lot of time deconstructing the news, trying to, trying to parse it into a form that everybody can understand. We try to find those little nitpicks where it goes, it flies above the fray, et cetera. If you really like these videos that we do, I want to ask a big favor. Please go ahead, number one, subscribe to our channel. And number two, please join if you can. Thank you so kindly for watching. Keep watching. Please remember to share. We must populate the entire internet with our progressive message. A message that we know is what most Americans say that they want. So help us, please, join.